All right, we have a meeting of the board who signed for the invitation and to do a tribute to our God. Thank you again for this day and the privilege that we have to serve our community. And we ask those things that we do tonight would be pleasing in your will and our lives in Jesus' name, amen.
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 Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution which stands on a nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Marcia got no credit now? I took yours, didn't I?
You did. I'll put just a mic.
Okay, well, looking at this workshop and Madam Clerk, you will present us our ballot's budget. Is this the first thing in our?
It's the memo. That's the first thing.
The memo.
The 2023-2024 budget is balanced at $3,231,482. This includes grants. The raise is for the employees over 4% for the children billing work and the maintenance. That's our food that's existing employees. The new clerk is figured at 15:01 per hour for a 20-hour work week and an OPS for outside maintenance at the raise $13 per hour as needed. This will not be a regular employee of town. This will be somebody from there. They may be regular, but they only get OPS. They'll get a 1099. They won't have any obligation to this employee, you know, retirement, no health insurance, none of that. The 20-hour position on the clerk will not have health insurance. And, you know, that's about the best we can do, you know. The 20-hour employee will get instead of our regular employees that wants two hours a week for sick and annual leave, the 20-hour person will get one hour per week, receive one hour per annual, and they'll get any holiday that falls on their regular scheduled work day. That holiday does not fall on their work day, she'll work, you know, she'll work. The Florida League of Cities Insurance is $60,000 per year. Our lowest salary that we had was $14,000 a year with Grimland Associates. That is my recommendation. Their qualification need all the other qualifications of all the others that put in proposal for services. The retirement for the regular employees is 13.57% matched for the town. Elected officials is 58.68% matched for the town to pay. This is all employees except for Ms. Carter who opted out for our retirement because she didn't think she was going to run. I know attorney, she was here for two years, which had her offer back English.
I have been.
You may not offer too much.
Good job, you did.
Any day. The state monies are up. You know, our fuel, our operating expenses, everything, utilities, everything is up. The grant makes our budget look excellent. Without that grant, we got about a $400,000 budget. You know, the grant make us look good, but, you know, we have to stay within our town. We got our population estimates today. State of Florida estimates our population at 375. We're probably not that with the tenants moving out that have been moving out in the past few months, you know.
But when I've been living, people say, "We're what?" So I tell them it's about 350. So I didn't miss it.
Yeah, you probably got a lot. But on your income sheets, the first one, this is a comparison for what our revenues are. This is in general funds, which is our state money that's coming there. Water system is, you know, you can see in '22 and '23, we got $26,480 worth of revenue sharing. This year we're getting $30,000. So the first one right there should be larger. In our state infrastructure monies, we got about $30,709 last year. It's going to be $47,750. But that first page there is comparison of what from this year to next year, you know, what we're looking at.
Okay, I'm still.
You still, like, really good. This is.
Thank you, Paige. You read enough of that.
Okay, that is mine.
Is this it? That's it. Yeah, this is it.
No, that, well.
'23, '24?
Yeah, that, that's, oh, but yeah, that's the monies here. But this is compared on right here.
Okay.
Right here. This is '22, '23, '24. They're up. Some of our state monies are up, you know, fire monies, you know, they're. When you look at the budget, you'll see no budget for the Recreation Department this year combined their expenditures, which is utilities and the port plot for the park down there into general funds. General funds will be paid on that this year. They haven't generated money down there in two years, so we're not, you know.
Did the, did the, oh, that bill on the fire budget, did the county fund the fire budgets this year?
Yes.
Did the county fund any recreation funding this year?
No, they only fund if we have players to certify to them. We don't about get any money from the county.
Just because we're, just because we said without recreation?
Doesn't mean we'll give some money. We got to have recreation to get money from the county. And if you, if you look at your budget summaries, it should be your next page. Now here it is.
That be it this time?
That's it this time. Okay. You have the 2022, '23, '23, you know, up there, but, you know, it looked good last year with the arco monies in there. On the bottom is your 2023-2024 budget. Our general funds budget says about $323,000, you know, $3 million with grants, you know, but without grants, it's a lot less, you know. If you look, we got a grant there of, Jackson Street.
One to over a million dollars.
Yes, two is over a million. Yeah. And then your general funds, you know, our general funds budget is $141,735 if you take out all the grants and do a general fund, you know. And then maybe a little bit more carryover in that, but we just don't have a lot of rent to play this year, you know. The fire budget, the county's, you know, they, we got about $48,000 to work with in the fire department, you know, their insurances, you know, they're paying part of the insurance for their building. That's what we have to do, hasn't it?
Is that carryover? That's the, that's the big generate though, isn't it?
No, no.
No.
That carryover is what we carry over from the county.
From the county.
Thought we'd get another draw after October, you know.
We get the, we get the high draw for this year.
You get after your ordering budget, ordering dollar budget, you know, the water sales projecting about $151,200, garbage serving to about $63,000. We get about $1,000 in lake fees. We're going to probably carry over a little more than $10,000 in the water department, but that's yet to be seen, you know. We got some, we got our USDA payment coming up September 1. It's going to come up, you know, after I get out tomorrow, probably. Our non, we're going to, I put in some non-potable, which, you know, Anderson has got the contract through Wasso. They're still wanting to do their same, but we told them everything he is on the boat from the county, you know. These other trucks that's coming in here that Anderson subbed or anything like that, I'm proposing to charge them $3 a gallon for non-potable water. We're going to put a, we're going to put our hoses back in the fence. We're going to, you know, put a chart out there and they try their, we're going to put each company's name and put a chart, they put the beginning there and the end of it, or even the end of it, we rather. And then we'll, we'll bill out each month for those non-potable customers, you know.
That's sound true.
Is the $3, is that something that there's a form in some place or just?
There's a far, somewhere between $3 and $6 is what we can, they say we can charge somewhere along in there, you know. I'd say we start out with $3, so we could get enough customers to do rates and money, you know.
I'd probably say, since we never have, that we would just start off with the top. I didn't know how you figured it to be, but I agree with starting, the rural water, yeah. I'd agree with starting that. It'd be like, it'd be like supply and demand. If anyone's more supply, we'll demand some more supply.
But, yeah.
Do y'all agree with that?
But, yeah, our water is going to be around 17,000 or less down just due to the trails coming out.
Twenty thousand dollars off, just about.
Yeah, just about, you know. Straight, straight, you know. We got some monies in there for streets and roads, and we got some money in there also for OPS, you know.
Can we, can I ask a question?
You sure can.
Oh, you talking about OPS. Would it be better that we, when we needed an OPS, that we can hit them and pay them short and well?
We're going to pay them $13 an hour.
$13 an hour.
And what we'll probably do is put it out in a newsletter or something if anyone wants to, you know, work, you know, put in application for OPS or maybe like this. Don't put in application at the town hall, you know. We do have to go background check on, you know, all that.
Well, I think that would be good. That's my, that's my, I can.
I agree. Do you, do we need to ask Mr. Carter about that because you sound like we're going to get a list with, we may have 30 people on there that we can call.
That wants to work.
That wants to work, I understand. But just call somebody, patients are drug tested today. We're going to use them till January or just go ahead on that list. Can we call them and use them anytime or we're going to have to test them every time for a day's worth?
Well, I don't know. We need to talk to Jim about all that, you know. I know some of the, like Kerry Eagle, they are seasonal employees. They only, they don't have a full-time maintenance or anything. They're seasonal during grass cutting time and stuff like that. And you could probably get some, as long as they're, you know, like the Cedar Program used to be, they was teenagers, you know, 16, you know, it's like, you know, we just have to see what Mitch Carter says about that, you know.
And you could.
And we can still get the inmates when we, when.
Oh, yeah. I haven't heard Cedar in a long time. That was.
That's how Dallas and Slayton got on here, you know, and you got all the tenants, you have Cedar Program.
My first year.
And also, to keep in mind, we still qualify for the NCBA program, which is a senior worker, 55 and over. The, if, we just pulled out from that program, you know. They didn't pull out from those, where it sort of been during COVID, you know, but they're back now. And they'll place somebody here, you know.
They will?
That's how we had Larry Donaldson and, you know, Larry was an excellent worker.
Larry was good. Well, that sounds great.
We got options, you know, for part-time employment, you know, and that's 20 hours a week. The CBA pays, that is a federal grant, you know.
I'd probably like to see what are we going to do? Is that reinstated? What, did we have that by y'all's here? You remember Larry Donaldson from Chigman Wood School, probably about my age?
I know the name.
You know, okay, he, he was here during the time that.
Rick I was mayor.
Yeah, but was it Jimbo or was it Slayton? But anyway, he was an excellent record keeper of that. I mean, he done, he done really good. And if you're over 55, I think he maybe had some kind of, I don't know, disability, but interaction kind of.
He had anxiety.
Anxiety. He was, he was excellent here though.
Because he didn't have to deal with wrong people.
He didn't have to deal with nothing. And he kept excellent records and.
He done excellent.
I think we had one, we had one here one time before Marcy or anybody, but we had one here that worked with you for a while.
We had several people.
One for that, and he gives us, and I used to turn over a lady, she was over than the 55 minutes, if you want to mean it, and.
We had, we had Betty Dickey, we had Betty Griner, we had Pauline Doll, Pauline, Pauline Horford, I don't remember. Then Ms. Bernie was the last one, you know.
And she, she was on that for a while, I guess she was.
Yes, she was. She was the last. She was here when Joey was court.
Yes, yes.
But it's a good program.
What do we have to do to get reinstated?
We just have to call them and tell them to come down and just contract.
Would y'all like, like for her to pursue that?
Yes, yeah, and like.
Into this.
You taking notes, Mark? No big deal. But that's where we're at on the budget, you know. It's just, you know, we're going to spend sparingly this year. If we don't leave it, we're not going to get it, you know. Or y'all, if y'all don't leave it, y'all don't need to get it. I won't be here, but y'all, y'all don't need it. Y'all don't need to, 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 to spend money like I'm in high trees on deck for it, you know.
What's the difference in the fire fund and the volunteer fire fund?
Volunteer fire fund is the money that they make on their phone rates.
Okay.
It can be used, it's supposed to supplement their fire budget if they need it, you know, the county fire funds if they need it. And they use it for stuff like, they make donations to, like when Gary Owens had the, sort of, you know, if a member of the fire family or a member of the community has a disaster, the fire department does a lot. They, they send flowers to, you know, a lot of people. They, they spend their money on, and sometimes they buy a piece of equipment. Right now they're saving up for one of those, I can't recall what it, but they go in with blue lights or something that goes into the fire and they can see.
Window, indoor.
Yeah.
Thermal?
Thermal, yeah, thermal. They're saving for one of them. They're going to have a street festival.
And they did their, their shirts and jackets and stuff. I doubt most of that.
But that's where we're at. I mean, we, we can make it and we may have more than we think, you know, so. It's just the insurance that's hitting us safe. If you take $60,000 a year from 35 last year, that's a pretty great, you know.
What, 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 what makes that so high?
Well, right now is our problem. We added the firehouse out there. It went up our property insurance went up 50% plus the state of Florida, all property, if you notice your homeowner's insurance. Everything went up. The property insurance went up drastically. And they're hoping maybe they'll cut it back some, but I've never, you know, been here all the time.
Maybe they don't.
They don't.
I imagine, I imagine the addition down, the renovation sound, possibly had us to go back and go up some. If we get that second round, it'll go up some more. When they, when they come back to appraisal again, it'll.
So the 4% raise that you have figured in for the assistant clerk and utility billing and.
Well, you tell the mail-in assistant clerk it's the same thing, the same position.
So when was the last time previous to this that there was a raise given for that?
Uh, last year. We get raises 3% to 4% every year. Now, this will be the first raise Marcy's got. She's, she's here just September of the night. She'll be here in one year. She got a raise off her probation, but after that she has all the annual then. Two first ones made in a year.
For the record, it was a good idea and all, uh, some, one time we went six years, seven years, I think it was six. I know that we didn't get raises. The county, many, daddy and all, none of us got raises. But also every year gave 2% to 4%.
Sometimes, one year we got 1%, but you got to.
1%. And over the years, our philosophies, I think, have been, we hadn't discussed it, but by our actions, I think our philosophies have been, we take care of our employees first and then we do everything else. But, uh, there may just come a time when we, we can't do anything for anybody anyhow if we're just looking like it is.
And Kim's taken on a lot more responsibility since we have a part-time health team, you know. Right now it's out this week. It's, it's in the hospital always.
It was probably, it may be 10 years ago now. I asked Mr. Gunaway the other night before we were at Turner being in a state of, what do they call it, natural crisis or something like that with the state. And outside of that, this is probably one of the leanest budgets that I've seen in a long, long time. And.
As far as general funds, yes.
Yes, yeah.
The last time we went into a state of financial crisis, it was the water system.
Yeah.
And that's why we've been more diligent to raise these rates, even though it hurts everybody, you know, but we've been more diligent than to raise the rates.
And I'm expressed this to Morgan. This is not a criticism to Morgan. It's just, this is, you heard them saying it is what it is. We had, we had this tower sales thing out here. We had that money and.
We had arco money.
Meeting after meeting after meeting, and I've said, that needs to be here, can't be touched. That money should have been voted on by the council before it was touched, but.
What was the spend on?
It was spent on daily operations, removing some pine trees. It just, it was just spent in daily operations, you know. Something in the water system. When the water system was lean, we put $25,000 in the water system, but it was, we had not covered everything like.
And the fire department.
Yeah, the fire department.
Nobody, nobody loves firemen, law enforcement better than I do. They were smart. They were the manpower for what I did for so many years. We didn't have lots of staff. They, they came in and did that. But we've, we have, we called it lenient. We take some money out of the general fund and then in and of it, you get back into general fund. It'll be their next budget coming out because there was always another flat tire or another generator.
Well, and when the firehouse was built, there was near enough money to build that building. City put in probably close to, I know, $20,000 that went in the ground out there for a tank, for the, you know, for the generator and the heaters and all of that. There was this and that, you know, the budget didn't cover, the city voted, we'll cover it, you know. We probably got, city's probably got a miss on money. And that fire department probably closed to $50,000 or more, you say, or.
I imagine. And, and I, and I think, I think that.
The money was not missing. It was, it was opted every year.
Yeah, there's nothing, but we didn't, we didn't have these workshops often enough and thorough enough to know where the money was going. And we'd say, you know, I thought we knew that. Morgan, we got money. Morgan said, yeah, we got money. And she spent money as long as we had money.
That's right.
Now, we don't have money. We, we maybe should have said, Morgan, don't let us get below.
This amount.
This line in any, any place.
But like I said, a lot of it, we did the fire department, a lot of it went to, you know, general operations. Our pro money went to salaries, you know. Most of that was, we do. And Dallas and all of them. But a lot of that also went to infrastructure projects. You know, we doing the cover for what $15,000 down here on Second Avenue and, and Monroe Street that washed out. Other infrastructure projects we've done.
So what you're saying now is this budget, we really can add, uh.
We can.
This is, this is the income, or is it?
Our budget summary?
Yeah, is it? Yeah, the budget summary. If we do, if we do what's written here.
Yeah, that and there's.
We can, we can get by.
We can get by, so.
Okay, now, so, and this is, I just say SWAT. They have never asked us for money or anything. I guess like SWAT comes by or other Goodwill Club or anything like that. We're not going to have, we're not going to have money to. Is that, is this going to put out our project graduation?
No, we funded, those are in those, so.
They're in here.
Yeah.
They're in that.
Miss Alani.
Miss Alani's, okay.
We'll probably not give them as much, you know, but we feel. You know, and as much as you say we love our fire department, you know, they don't have that many active members out there. They have a roster full of people. How many things? I don't know, you know. But y'all fund $2,000 a year there for a Christmas banquet, you know, which is all they get all year, you know.
And that's what we do.
That's what the city does.
Because.
That comes out of your own.
Because they, they be paying their own if we.
That's our appreciation.
That's our appreciation for them. Is our insurance on them? Is workers comp on them based on the, on the, on the road or?
Based on 24 Fireman.
Based on 24 Fireman.
But our workers comp is not drastic. It's our property that's hurting us, you know.
Mr. Smith's not here, and I always say that we're going to talk about, people are talking about their thing they need to be good, but we can have them later. But maybe we need to just say, if we got people on the road, but they're now going to so many fires, that they may be dropped off, go back to body and shirts and jackets and caps and workers, workers come, move home, turn out gear, all that, cost us money. And if you're not going, if you're not going to turn out, you're not going to be a fireman.
Yeah, I mean, looking at the fire meeting, little roster thing, they had 11 in July and 12 in August that showed up.
And that's about it all the time. Sometimes I.
Sometimes they're five or six.
Type of six, yeah.
Here in the summer, on the vacations and all that.
And I tell you, when you say volunteer, that says laws because they, they're turning that to do something for the community. But, but if those services are something that we're supposed to provide as the, as the town, it needs to be provided whether it's by volunteer or if we have to get somebody else or something like that. That's not even a suggestion. Okay, why don't council have a question or a comment or a recommendation on the budget? Now's the, now's the time. Is there, is there any, anything, even if it's just a line item, not a department or just one, but just a line item, is there any place in here we're going to see real contingency? We're going to see real contingency.
Well, when I will ask, I just, that's all.
That's the balance.
Yeah, that's the balance.
So anything that's left over in line item will be able to be contingency.
Yeah, we'll have contingency.
Yeah, because the real contingency, you just can't.
No, we can't operate.
We can't do that. We can't do that. We can't do that at home.
So what is the rule now for, like, the clerk saying, okay, we can, you know, extend this much money for maintenance or, you know, like, you know, something that just happens out of the ordinary that you need fixed? What is the?
Up to a certain amount, the clerk can authorize that expenditure. If it's over, say, 2,000 in an emergency, the clerk can authorize, like a hurricane or something, authorize it to 5,000. But usually if it's over 1,000, I bring it before y'all. Unless it's a lightning strike or something like that, that's going to be an insurance claim, you know.
Yeah. She can authorize that if it's in the budget.
Yeah.
She can authorize an over expenditure.
Not without y'all's approval.
And what the state requires us to do is pass a balanced budget.
And there'll be amendments and all that throughout the year. And y'all should, you know, should get a quarterly budget list as expenditures, you know, like you took in that quarter, based on something like this, you should give, you know, this is how much we got in, that's a payroll for the first quarter, payroll. It is, we have, we usually have one, that's not this one, but usually, you know, the fire department, I say, wants the county every quarter of what they took in, what they expended, you know. We also have to send their check rest to the county, plus their meeting minutes and.
If we come to a quarter and we, we get the, the budget printout, get the budget to recap for the quarter, just use $100 for simplification. If we got a $100 budget, when we come to the end of the first quarter, we ought to get taken in $25. If we've only taken in $15, that would send up the flag that our revenue's not coming in. I could owe it to. On the expense side, if we come to the end of the quarter and we spend $26, we already got a gap there, we got, we got about $11 gap between expenses and income. And so we knew we got to slow down the spending. Some of this money that is in different departments can be moved. can be moved somewhere else, but it has to be brought to the council. We have to do a budget amendment. We can't change the bottom line of the balanced budget, but we can take it from the right hand and put it in the left hand and those department budget totals can change.
Except for the street department, street lines, street lines can't be touched.
It can be, you've seen it works up on the streets, uh, that's a state rule, that's a, that's, but, uh.
Maybe that's your street, man, we're only getting a thousand dollars for lots of gas.
Why we, why we going through a change, it should be a good time for us to, to look for what we want.
Yes, that's right.
And what we need.
That's right.
Any, any other questions about the budget or comments on it? This is the, this is the time for us to really, uh, as the council come together and one mind, one core, get it, get it set, go, and we will start October the first, knowing what we want and expect. And, and any meeting that we come to, we ought to ask about things that might be show letters or requests that we get and different things like that.
I mean, you get your bank statements every month in your, in your packets.
Yeah.
They are in there. You need to make sure your next clerk continues that process, you know. Most of the cities do not put bank statements in their council bank, that's why I don't know, but I've always wanted y'all to know exactly what was in that bank or in, within that bank and what come out of that bank. And those are probably whatever check was been wrote and was deposited in, in each of the statements.
It does take two signatures and Ms. Carter and I, whichever one of us assigned the checks that week, we did every invoice and.
Initial.
Initially, any invoice, we've seen that, and I question Morgan often, and she'll say, this is, uh, did the fire department represent the whale number one or whale number two, something like that, some of those technical things, I don't know if they work, uh, you know, like, um, tire store or something. If it's a Walmart, I question that because, you know, and just, it'd be legitimate, but we just make sure that everything is.
Wait, I'm not, I know they were sudden services, I was saying, why is sudden services?
Police.
Sudden services?
Yeah.
That was a generator repair.
Generators.
And that was, you know, we need to do a lot later on our maintenance salary. We paid six hundred and seventy-nine dollars for a generator person to come out here and tell us we had a dead battery at the. I like those programs. Marcy can tell you, I said something to Mr. Risher and to, uh, Tim. I said, we don't have a dead battery, all this again.
I think, I think I try not to get red faced very often. I think I've probably got red face that day, I think I'm gonna press the gun up just a little bit. We, we didn't, we didn't, Morgan was pissed, and I did not say anything to either one of those, but, okay, what do we?
How, why, we, have we sent out, uh, to get bids on the water, the water testing?
We have, we have gotten no.
You ain't gotten none?
No, so we, I think after we do that, we can solicit this and we can get anybody to apply.
Okay, that, that would be. I think that would be good.
We're still working on that, yeah, we're still working on that, to get that done.
So, so when is it, how long do we advertise it for?
We'll advertise, uh, we gotta advertise twice, because it's a order, so we.
Yeah, for the water guy.
Oh, we advertise it on board, you know, so.
Until you solve it?
Hmm.
Can we not, can we not solicit while this is going on?
Oh, yes, okay, yeah.
Okay.
I got a couple, I'm gonna call and see if they'll put in proposal.
Okay. And I, and if one, and maybe we made that a standpoint, uh, we, okay. So what this does is, uh, gives us the, the clerk, the building clerk, gives us one outside person, and then we'll do an OPS.
Season.
Procedural, procedural, uh, thing or, or operating procedure or something like that, no, and, uh, and, are you, what, are, is the clerk wanting to do that, is Tim wanting to do that, or we wanting to do that?
I think the clerk should do that. Tim can let them know.
Tim, Tim's recommendation.
Yeah, and then based on what, you know, funds, you know, whatever.
Is that all right with everybody? We have a list of people, you know, uh.
And if we don't.
Thomas, Thomas Richardson, he's been there for us for years, and.
He's still coming for college. He's still coming for college.
And it didn't matter how dark it was, or how wet or cold it was, he, he come.
Can he do what Register does?
No. We got to have.
He's out of here.
Now, see, Mr. Risher, uh, he's our, he's our water operator, which he does the sample and then he takes the samples to the lab. He's also our distribution operator, which is, if we have a leak, per the EP rule, if we have a leak, whatever time the night is, whatever time it is, uh, he has to be on site. We can't repair a leak without him on site.
Because he does.
Because he does, and, uh, you know, that's just the way it is.
I was wondering, you don't have the option as a city to do paperless billing, do you? I just wondered how much that would save the city if we did something like that.
I don't, we only send out a couple hundred bills, I won't do that, but, but we can check into it. I can tell you right now that most of our customers, it's gone from us to send a check or anything. Probably eighty percent of our customers, correct me if I'm wrong, Marcy, they pay online now.
Really?
Yes, sir.
I didn't figure eighty percent of them pay on computers.
They go from their phone or there's something.
Their phone, yeah.
They pay online, probably eighty, and maybe up to eighty-five percent now, but I know at least eighty percent of our customers pay.
Oh, I thought you were talking about, like, he made a, a big.
Just like, you know, like most places now, you can opt to do paperless billing, or they send it to you email, or text it to you or whatever. I just, and it might not say anything, it's just an idea.
Yeah. We need to hear every idea.
Check into that.
Okay, Mr. Morris, any questions or comments or anything?
I don't have any.
Mr. Allenburg, I don't think you're cut us off, uh, if we got questions, I'd, but just for the sake of time, uh, Ms. Wilson, Ms. Carter.
What are we gonna do about, are we gonna do anything by getting the phone for, uh?
We're working on that now.
Tim and three sixty.
We're working on that now. Verizon's got, they sent a budget to do those, so we're gonna go ahead and do three phones, which will be the security board clerk, the clerk and the maintenance will be under one plan. By three sixty, we'll be on everybody's phone, not just the, the, you know, discrimination is a big deal, you know, we, if we put it on Tim's, we need to put it on ours too. Everybody's phone needs it on, you know. We don't need to discriminate against nobody.
I hope that's all. That's all.
I know you have another meeting with us, but I'd like, I'd like to know what are, what problems you're reading this through before you, before you leave. I mean, we need to, we need to know, we, we get calls, we get these things, and, and, uh, when I call you, you seem to know about it, but I don't know about it. We, we need to know about it, uh, you know.
Well, I think in twenty-seven years, Marcy, the biggest thing you've ever said to me is, don't let me be blind inside of this meeting. So you're called. Now, I try to get the rest of them too.
I know, I know, I'm surprised, I don't.
I'm surprised.
It's not my shit, uh, have, you know, and I appreciate you doing that. Okay, uh, here, no other discussion, uh, anybody in the audience, this is for here, I have to give our audience a chance to speak. Anybody in the audience like to address the budget for twenty-three, twenty-four, the town hall song? Okay, we'll close the, we'll close the public hearing then, and that will bring us actually to a, and get back on the budget segment, that will bring us to a boot.
And then to another public hearing on the Furtell project at the Bosom Palace, uh, just for public input, that's all we need on that.
Is that?
Oh, that's, uh, in number three, okay. All right, we've closed the public hearing on the budget, we now welcome the public hearing on the proposed Furtell, um, grant, and you had a meeting this afternoon with the committee.
That's great.
And so go ahead and give us, tell a friend's.
The committee voted, um, uh, unanimously to, uh, proceed with the Furtell grant, uh, for, uh, yeah, that's a next couple of days. On, uh, fence center at the Bosom Palace, a couple, uh, new pieces of playground equipment, to renovate some restaurants down there, that concession stand, they're still horrendous, you know, that concession stand needs renovation, uh, and for it at Bosom Palace, at Bosom Palace.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, um, uh, that's, uh, they agree with that recommendation to go, and they all agree that the fence in at the palace needs to be addressed, you know, it's, uh, it's bad, uh, so that's what they're proposing, and they voted unanimously to, uh, go with that, uh, that, which is, you know, we voted to, uh, are they voted to, uh, you know, a new playground, uh, renovate the baseball field fences, baseball field, we need some, leveling down there, we need a lot down there, you know, um, just a big renovation, renovate the program, we need some new locks down there, and some more locks. Now, we want to renovate our basketball court, which is one of their problems, they want some basketball courts back up down there. They look pretty beautiful right now. And, uh, the perimeter fence, uh, that's what we're putting in our grant. And then when we get, if we're approved of this grant, we can do amendments on it to take out what we don't, don't really need to do, you know, that won't take us out of the funding, but last year, the year before that, they couldn't get all the Furtell grants, you know. But, you know, my recommendation is after this year, you know, we've got all we can afford to insure down there. We need to back away from the Furtell since we really need something, you know, that's easy money, but it's also easy insurance, you know.
If anyone can be into the, uh, insurance shipping part, you can tell you, got one right on the end of the town.
Just passing by.
They've got a, they've got a rubber roll shelf there, and if we can get that out here, I, I, I would wish for that over shields or.
We had the rubber, we put, uh, in several, this year in the park, in the park area down there, and the new slide and the new playground, you know, that.
Okay, anybody want to have a discussion on that, uh, another project or anything on that that we, we could, or we have a committee to make a recommendation, do we accept a committee recommendation, or any discussion on that?
So we're gonna get this Furtell, it's not, not great.
It's great.
It is great. Okay, to do all that ballpark.
Yeah, the fence and all, yes.
It's great.
Yeah. And we're putting in our application, but it hasn't been funded yet, you know. If this hurricane comes in bad, you know, they might not fund any forever, and they did that one year, you know, don't come on any, so it's all a done deal, you know, you know. We don't have any public input.
Any input from anybody in the public about our grant, okay, we'll close that public hearing, uh, and just on the, on the side of the grants, uh, did you get a notice on the legislative, uh, meetings that's going to be in Washington, Holmes County, I think it's September, October?
No, we need to have someone.
We do, uh, that's usually been taking place like in February or something like
The, the, the applications have to be in by November now, John is already working on it, y'all ready guys to do Bosom Palace project here?
But we'll have, uh, uh, Senator Tubel and, uh, present to have it, me and Chipley, and that, they, I, I got a notice or something, I saw something in the Washington news or Foster Foley or something out. Did you run that? I think you did. I bet they're gonna be here in the next week, so we need to have people go up there, and, uh, our, our senators and representatives need to hear from us. It's all about the squeaking wheel against the Greeks, we need to do squeaking.
And I stress that to our, our, our legislature board, you know, please, call your legislators, call your senators, make some noise.
Yeah.
And I'll try to get John to have us a completed grant acquisition that we can hand to each one of them, always submitting it through the portal, you know.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be good, that'd be good. Okay, uh, close, the, uh, the public hearing is closed, we're down to item number four, uh.
Okay, uh, as I said, the Furtell, uh, the regulation, um, uh, legislature board, you know, approved the submission, I made the recommendation, and I just leave a motion and second from y'all to, uh, to approve their recommendation.
Okay, the recommendations for these things that the playground and the vault field and the fencing and things like that, what's the pleasure of the council?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and second, any discussion on the motion? Mr. Morris, have you voted?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Allenburg?
Yes.
Sheriff, yes.
Okay, now we got resolution number, uh, twenty twenty-three dash zero zero six, a resolution authorizing a submission of an application for the Florida Recreation Development Assistance Program to the Department of Labor and Transportation for the state fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five.
Okay, that resolution has the company's application.
Yes, sir.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the council?
I'll make a motion, we accept the resolution.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and second, any discussion on the motion? Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Allenburg?
Yes.
Ms. Morris? Yes. Sheriff, yes.
Okay, we need a selection of the audit firm for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-three fiscal year audit, that'll be for this year's audit beginning September thirtieth, you know, in the month, for their way to go.
Has everybody had a chance to look at the, uh, audit? I, I, we got three, and I may be surprised that we got that, I may be more surprised that we didn't get them all, uh, but, uh, we got three. All of them seem to be good firms, Carin, and, uh, Card Riggs and Ingram has been our audit for far twenty years, probably at least more than that.
They were here when I came, and they were here a couple of years before that, or probably about thirty years. Ms. B was the only one.
I'm not familiar with, with McDaniel, uh, Owens Grimley, uh, or Grimley and Associates was, uh, was for a number of years, I worked with him some when I, when I was working, he did some audits for the county and something like that. Basically, basically, when I saw when the audit's credentials were good, they got background, they got experience and something like that, uh, what I see that sets anybody apart from anybody else, even the ones that I personally know, what sets anybody apart from anybody else is, uh, about twenty-four thousand dollars, you percent of, and what's gonna cost us. Uh, anybody got a comment or want to make a comment about the, about the audit proposals?
We don't have one to spend, we don't have that twelve thousand to spend.
That extra, yeah. Okay, no comments, the sheriff will accept a motion on, uh, on accepting one of these proposals.
I'll make that motion.
And that's for, that's for Grimley, the, 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 uh, least expensive one, that was for Grimley, okay. Uh, okay, we have a motion from Ms. Carter to, uh, approve the Grimley proposal for our audit for the coming years, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and second, any discussion on the motion? Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Allenburg?
Yes.
Ms. Morris?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
And the sheriff, yes. Okay.
Okay, you have, the next thing in your package is, uh, uh, selection of the clerk and staff there. Y'all should have, Marcy has your score sheets in your books, and I've got, she has a total score sheet of all the totals from all of Marcy there.
I just tell you about each one and each one.
And.
Yeah, I have that.
That's where mine was.
We didn't get yours back on the three, Roger, that was still.
Ms. Carter?
It was happening.
Okay. I told you mine was a wing.
And I can't find yours, it's two thirty on the floor, they sealed. I don't know what happened with that, I, I don't think I put it back in the drawer, I didn't see it.
But I thought it was in there.
I, I thought it was, I don't know.
Anybody have a discussion on this before we, before we, uh?
The three candidates are Denise Spencer, Linda Glasto, and Glenn Gauthier.
I wish we had been able, and sometime in the future, maybe if we can do this, I wish we'd been able to see those applications without names on them. And, and I, I didn't, and I'm sure that you did. We did our best to look at, to look at qualifications and, and with as little money as we've got, I think we need to get the best service out there that we can, the best qualified and things like that. Uh, I thought two or three of, three or four of them might have good qualifications. Some, I think their qualifications was not, they were probably good workers, but their qualifications were good for, I didn't say it on the applications. That's, that's probably my comments on, on what we asked. And we haven't done this in a long, long time. If they's a question that Margaret or I, you only can answer because of our experience, I'll be, I'll be dead to do that. Does anybody have any question on either one of the candidates or a comment on either one of the applications, any one of the candidates, just leave it?
I don't.
No. Do we have a motion from the council?
To what?
To hire somebody or something.
We all, yes.
Can I make a comment?
Please.
Um, as far as the qualifications, I feel like Ms. Gauthier had the most qualifications.
Because, because we're recording, would you please come closer and, and, and speak louder?
Marcie Brock, I, I feel like as far as the qualifications, the person that had the most, you know, experience and qual, and, you know, the most qualified per the application, I feel like that was Ms. Gauthier, and, um, you know, and I, I don't know her personally, but, um, you know, what I have seen her out and about helping with the community, she seems really nice and, um, but I just, you know, putting my opinion out there, you know, because I want the best for the town. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcie, and, uh, you, you'll work whoever we do.
Yes.
People have gotten to see that.
Whoever.
Margaret, do you, have you looked at it? You know what's going to be done here? What, do you have an opinion you like, sure?
Hands down on the qualification, um, Ms. Gauthier is the best qualified candidate for the position. You know, whether she's right for the town or not, uh, I don't know. That's y'all's decision. Whether it's time to put out an olive branch and make peace in the town, that's also y'all's decision.
That's not to happen, whatever we do. Okay, any, any comments now?
So on our score sheets, who, who had?
Denise has the most.
Denise.
Okay.
How, what's the, what's the difference?
Uh, out of the four council members' score sheets that I had, um, they, I mean Denise won by a lot as far, as far as the score sheets. She definitely won.
I, I agree with Marcie's opinion on the qualifications. Uh, and, and who were our qualifications? What did, what did any of the council see in Ms. Spencer, we didn't see in either Ms. Glasto or Ms. Gauthier?
I'm sorry.
The other two, the other two have been, been here, been here or attached to the city for a long, long time. Ms. Spencer's fairly new. Uh, don't even look at applications and all, don't even have a lot of, for his driver's license. He's still got a outstate driver's license. So we need to, we need to know why, why we're hiring if we don't, if the qualifications are better, I need to check that to them.
I feel like she had the best qualifications as well, Ms. Gauthier did, but, um, I'm kind of like Margaret, you know. Just because somebody has qualifications don't necessarily mean that they're going to be the best fit for the town.
And you know, go ahead.
That's where I'm at with it. Uh, I just think, uh, Spencer would be the best for the town.
Because, well, the facts.
She don't have a background.
Yeah. Well, is everybody familiar with the settlement of the background?
Uh, I think I was on the council whenever all of that took place.
And we, uh, we can't open ourselves up if we, if we are seeing any kind of retaliatory move to be about that role or. Wish Mr. Parker was here. I'm not sure how much we can, because those sort of things that were supposed to be sealed in this, um,
Mm-hmm, yeah.
We have to hear about those things.
But you also got to remember that, um, the town hires with a six-month probationary period. During, anytime during that six month, you can let that one go and go to the next one or whatever y'all need to do if it doesn't work out as a fit for the town. Uh, that's why we have that six-month probation. I don't think we've ever, uh,
And that.
got our authority on that, but, uh, you know, we, we.
And I would be the first in the six months to vote if, if it didn't work out, if we went that way and it didn't work out. Uh, I would be the first, and you were on the council, and you know that we fought that diligently. We didn't, we, we all the way to the end. The city, uh, had problems, our side, our side had problems. And we didn't deal with them, and we didn't address them. And, uh, and we had a chance for it not to go as far as it did, but we chose not to take that, so.
Do you have a seat also? Do you have a seat also here? On the county, yeah?
I forgot, I heard there's Vern Boles and I was.
And, and, um.
Who?
Bernie, do you, Sheriff?
The one, the one.
The one, yeah. Okay, the sheriff will accept the motion. I, I, I think that the better qualified is, uh, is Ms. Gauthier. Um, and Ms. Rutter thinks say it, Marcie thinks say it, you, uh, Margaret thinks say it. Uh, Ms. Walznow, you?
Jamie was wanting to make a motion. Jamie was wanting to make a motion.
Okay.
Marcie, I didn't know who was up there.
About, hey. Didn't, didn't you have a question or a statement?
No, I didn't, I didn't have a statement, but I just thought we'd go by the scores that we all got.
Yeah, and that's what we're talking about, yeah, how the one score, what, what was good about Ms. Spencer, and what good about others?
Well, I don't know, you know, you know, we, we got to thank for the town of Wausau. And, uh, I don't know now. I, I agree that Lynn was real qualified, but you got to thank the town. You got to thank the citizens that we serve in this town, little town of Wausau. And, uh, I think you got to go by that, all we need to.
Yeah, that's what we needed for.
Yeah, that's what, that's what we did the work on.
Ms. Carter, your comments?
I agree with John, our, we need to go by the score sheets.
Okay.
Give Ms. Spencer a chance. We don't know what she can do, what she can't do. We've got six months to find out.
The same six months that we.
Same six months. We can rotate, we can.
Do we, do we, do we agree among ourselves that in that six months, if we don't have what we want, we can come back?
Sure.
Do you think? Sheriff will entertain a motion, or will give up the gavel and make a motion?
I'll make a motion and we'll give them Ms. Spencer.
We have a motion, is there a second? Second. We have a motion and second. Any discussion on the motion? The sheriff votes yes. Mr. Walznow?
Yeah.
Ms. Rutter?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Okay. Would you please relay that to Ms. Spencer and get her, uh, we need to set it starting to, and I want the council to vote, and Ms. Spencer to vote. It, this is nothing personal. I, I will work with her just as, just as hard as I can, just like I did with Margaret. This is, this is just, uh, my opinion was it was, the qualifications were, were better and, and, uh, water under the bridge needs to float way downstream. I, I hope that, I hope that happens more. Okay, when's her, when's her start date? I think it needs to be as quickly as we can get around the border.
It needs to be, uh, we're off Monday for a holiday, so that's the fourth of September. Our payroll starts on Fridays.
Next Friday?
Yeah, next Friday.
Well, if a Friday, it needs to.
It's kind of right.
Every, every day, every Friday is payroll.
Oh, okay.
Our, our start, our, starting our payroll is on Friday. We only work on Thursday, but it's Friday through. I think Marcie started on the week after Labor Day, you know.
Yeah, she did. She started, what, she did after Labor Day, didn't she?
No, the Friday, her night, the night was on Friday last year.
Okay, um, so can we get her, get her group trained and everything by then?
Oh, yeah, we'll get her group training and all. Next week, we get her group training. We're going to start, what's Friday? It's next Friday's day.
Next Friday's the first.
Next Friday is the day.
Oh, yeah, this Friday's the first, next Friday's the end.
Yeah.
September eight.
September eight, are on eight?
Yeah.
And can we, need a second motion, or can we just include that?
You can make a motion.
A second motion?
I will, listen, can I, if you want, I'll make their motion too.
You're a man, and she made her motion, make it, hey, that's good, okay. Everybody's voting good?
Okay. All right.
Okay.
The next thing in your package is introduction of a, a budget orders, uh, let me turn that page here. It is ordered up as twenty-three dash zero zero two, an office adopting a budget for the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four for the town of Wausau, Florida, and appropriate funds for sad fiscal year. This is only the first, you know, we'll hold another public hearing on the twenty-first, uh, and then vote to, you know, which you'll have more say, and, you know, another time to look at the budgets also, and then adopt it. Um, it's the twenty-first or the twenty-eighth. That's when your last option is to adopt it, you know.
Okay, so this is.
Just to add, first read and then the first.
Advertise.
And advertise.
Sheriff will entertain a motion. Do we advertise the budget for a coming year?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and second. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Rutter?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Sheriff, yes, and Ms. Walznow, yes.
Okay. That, that is all I have, sir.
Okay. Okay, anything, Mr. Parker?
I don't have any.
Ms. Carter?
Uh, that's Potsam Palace. How much do you charge to read that about the day?
Fifty-three, fifty, right now.
Okay.
Um, but now for benefits and, you know.
Yeah, we want to do a benefit for, for baby Emma on September sixteenth. That's Saturday, it's on Saturday. And so, that's one, but the.
I don't think, actually, we don't.
We, we'll be self-charge for a benefit.
We don't charge for things like that, or.
Right. But what I was going to say is, the people that are putting on the benefit, they only use it once a month, regular. And they'll pay the fee to use it. It's a cornhole competition.
Okay, now, uh, the, are they going to use the outside and the inside or? We have, we have fifty, fifty dollars for if they can use the pavilion area and the outside grounds, and then it's seventy-five dollars if they can use the whole Potsam Palace, you know, everything.
No, they wouldn't need nothing but the bathroom.
Okay, fifty dollars. Fifty dollars.
Yeah, what are they going to do?
Cornhole competition.
Oh, yeah.
I, I didn't know that was such a big thing, right?
Oh, it's.
They had done the news last night.
Roll this thing around.
Yeah, it is, and.
Could they have been like turning smaller and charged fees, something like that?
Yeah.
Yeah, they'd be doing, we.
And they want, want to, and they say there'll be three, three, four, five hundred people coming.
My goodness.
So that'd be, uh, be thankful, also.
It would. And, and it's good that you brought that up. We probably need to go back and look at some of our fees. You got a loss of, you got a losses stub down our fifty dollars.
Yeah.
And that's why I was going to say we need to do that.
We need to look at that.
You know, we ought to really look at it when we got the fees down there, always going to charge our, we can't like somebody's wedding fees and act.
But when are they going to start working on it?
We're not till we get a grant from the legislators, as long as it'll take.
This second round, we hope it's funded. It's hooked. We thought it was going to be funded this year. We, we thought.
We laughed, didn't we?
Going, going from the back to that, we thought it was going to be funded all of, the whole thing at one time.
Then inflation.
And then they did the front, and then we went last year, we met the legislature last year, and, uh, we thought it was going to be done then, and it wasn't. So we're actually two cycles behind where we thought it was going to be funded. So that's reason I was saying, I'll go.
Is that going to be a grant? Yes.
Yeah. I read, I said, well, I go, we need to go to, when the, when the legislators are there and ship it, into the county commissioner's office, we need to be there and make our plea.
And we also need to see if we can set up a private meeting with them before they go to Tallahassee, you know, at their Panama City Office or Presty Office, you know, Chana Apple's offices in Presty over there. We need, we need to push this.
I thought they, he said that's gone now.
Hey, we want to have.
We, we want to have them for sure.
So you want a motion on that, or are just, they want to use it once a month as all?
They want to use it once, they just want to know about the rules, where, how it's going to cost, if y'all are done doing it.
Yeah, I, I think the cost would be appropriate, and I think that we need to, we need to, uh, get set dates so that we would have, we would.
They can let you know probably in the past. Probably once they get started, they use the same Saturday every.
Well, I, I think we would need to ask them to do that, because other people would want to.
Yeah.
Yeah, like, you know, Thanksgiving weekend, we make really good money if there are, that people show that comes in here. We make good money on that people.
You know?
Yeah, we do. The radio people come in radio weekend. We make good money off them, you know.
Okay.
And are you up?
Yeah, but I too, so I'm, I'm finished.
Rutter?
I'm good.
Okay. We will, uh, we will send it right now at our September meeting. We're going to honor Ms. Margaret before you.
We'll have a short meeting, five o'clock, six o'clock, over here. Yeah, we'll have, we'll have something after that, you know, but we're going to be out here at six o'clock, you know, we're going to advertise at the six o'clock.
Okay, uh, so you're saying, what do we do for you to hold it on after the meeting?
Yes, six o'clock, yeah.
Okay.
You think you want to eat, you think you want to eat in that?
Uh, uh. Okay, does anybody notice the outside OBS work?
What's OBS?
That's a personal service. You can use it from anytime you want.
If y'all saw, if y'all saw this stuff out here, when we went out the other night, it was head high, bushes growing out, trees growing out, they have that fruit out there. Cause they're really good weed eating and being, and I'm not sure what they're going to do tomorrow.
I know. Question. Long about that. Different question. We have all these garbage cans out here. I see people come over here on the weekend and just load up the garbage can and take to their house, put all their garbage in.
Are we missing, are we missing any, Marcie?
How many do y'all have out there?
We do have four out there.
Dumping them. We do have people to drop things out.
Dumping them. We do have people to drop things in a lot.
Yeah, people come put their...
I don't know about getting them to their house, but...
I seen, I seen one truck loading up.
Well, this morning when I got here, was it yesterday? This morning when I got here, they was closed, strung all down the highway out there in boxes. I picked all that, and then around the garbage cans, there was just a pile of clothes and a little bit of stool.
A little bit of stool. That's people's personal garbage.
I saw that.
I don't know, but I picked it all up.
We were here for a reunion a couple Saturdays ago. I know they pick it up once a week. And all four cans was really full.
That was, I thought we didn't put them out the week before that. I put them out last week.
But maybe they need to be locked in a fence.
If anybody needs one, we can get it out.
Our spares are usually locked in the fence. The ones we got that we take and deliver out. They are, but these are the towns.
These are for our use?
This, should you put a member?
Yeah. I don't know who did that. Roger did that.
I don't know.
What is it?
On this thing for Margaret right up, right there for you, I shared this thing. Y'all will have a member out there. I think you have everybody else's.
It should be there.
Should be there. I'm not a member, or are you?
She's a one body.
Yeah, we need to, we need to add that fees.
Sometime I think we should, we need to look at the fees where written the pallets out.
Yeah.
Any other facility we rent.
Yeah, well, you know, when the, when the one down there at the Rogers Square gets, and we move things out from here for the rental thing, that'd be a good time to print this and raise them all where they ought to be.
All of our grants are going out in the newsletter to let the people know, like Ms. Phillips said. They don't know. Well, they could know, you know, they could call, they could ask. But we put it out in the newsletter along with the flyer for our fair housing, you have to do a fair housing. Those will go out sometime the first week or so of September, because our dumpster's on that year, the last week in September.
Last week?
Last week.
All right, we send the jury.